I'd like to call to order this meeting of Monaga County Commission. Please note that we have, Mr. Sikora is absent today, but we do still have a forum. So if you will please rise for silent meditation and a pledge to the flag.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, Renetta is on vacation this week as well, so we have Colleen Coon standing in for her for the consent and approval.
There are eighty-one exoneration listings in the amount of forty-eight thousand, seven-hundred, sixty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. There are four requests to create new statements in the amount of three thousand, seven-hundred, fifty-six dollars. We don't have any minutes to approve. The vouchers, General County is three hundred, sixty-two thousand, two hundred, twenty-one, thirty-five cents. Cole Severance, one oh-three, fifty-five. Nine-one-one Cash, six-thirty-five, forty-three. Chestnut Ridge Park, three thousand, three-seventy-two. Camp Muffley, three thousand, five-oh-nine, thirty-two. Mason Dixon Park, two thousand, five-ten, forty-five. Assessor's Valuation, one oh-four, nineteen. The purchasing card vouchers, General County, three thousand, nine, twenty-seven, nineteen. Nine-one-one, eleven thousand, five-oh-five, one. Home Confinement, one thousand, five-seventy-eight, ninety-five. Chestnut Ridge Park, four hundred, fourteen, forty-eight. Camp Muffley, eighty-four, twenty-three. Mason Dixon Park, one thousand, three-oh-two, fifteen. For a voucher total of three hundred, ninety-one thousand, two hundred, sixty-eight, thirty. There are no budget revisions.
That typically.
Position vacancies for boards and authorities are Board of Zoning Appeal, Planning Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, Decker's Creek PSD, Mon County Development Authority, Mon County Building Commission. For fiduciary, there's the fiduciary orders for August second, two thousand and seventeen. And also, statement of services for George Armstead and Cynthia Van Stafford.
Okay. Move for approval? Second, it's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor? Aye. This passes. Introduction of new employees and any personnel changes. Do we have any? Hearing none, I will move on to comments from the public. I'd like to open comments from the public. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to make a statement in front of us? Hearing none, I would like to recognize Ryan Lynch of West Ridge Development. I would like him to come forward, if he would, for a comment from the public. Thank you, Ryan. If you would come forward. Welcome.
Thank you, commissioners, and thanks for having me. I just wanted to let you know that we are ramping up our national advertising, as you know, with West Ridge. And we were approached by a magazine called Site Selection that's got a circulation of about forty-five thousand corporate executives and site selectors across the country that evaluate locations for corporate, industrial, light industrial users. And we were able to get an ad placed that largely touts both the attributes of West Ridge, but also the attractive location because it's in Mon County and the growth and some of the accolades that Forbes and Policy Mike Magazine have put on us. So just wanted to let you know. Have a couple copies, if anybody would like it, and we'll continue doing that.
Thank you. It's, you know, it's really refreshing to see that we, you know, are being reached out to instead of having to be the reachers.
And we have, yeah, we've generated interest. We've gotten at least three or four calls. This was in the July issue, so.
I think it also shows that we're not just doing tunnel vision and just looking in this local area, and I appreciate it. I think that development is something that I would wish the rest of the state would also be able to, you know, work with us on. But right now, we're thrilled and we want to thank you, and we look forward to positive announcements in the future.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll close. Comments from the public. Colleen, grants?
I don't have any.
No grants today. All right. We have a hearing on the motion to close the estate of Martha Phillips Hupp. I hear that. Mr. Jaigle, recognize you, please.
Thank you. The estate is ready to be closed. This has been a contentious estate. Martha Hupp, if you may recall, was a beloved kindergarten teacher at Central School for many, many years. She established a complex trust with all her, the monies that she saved every month from all her teaching. Her son has objected throughout every stage of these proceedings to different things going on and has raised certain issues. I've given him many, many years to have attorneys contact me. He had attorney Sam, Sam Stone for a while. Sam Stone withdrew. He had an attorney in Wheeling, and I've never heard back from him. So the estate is ready to be settled. I have all the documents to do that. I spoke to counsel for the bank, and we've agreed to have it settled, and I'll provide my paperwork within two weeks. I've given him more than ample opportunity to object. I felt that was appropriate, but now, since I've heard nothing, and it's been almost a year now since my last communications with him, I think it is appropriate to settle.
So you would like to postpone this for two weeks?
For two weeks, yes. If you're, if you're okay with that.
Yes, I'll move that be postponed for two weeks.
Okay, that's second. All in favor? Aye. Motion's passed.
And you might have it before then.
Right.
The final settlement of the estate is done through the bank, and everything is cleared.
Okay. Appreciate you showing up and explaining that to us.
No problem, and I appreciate you giving me that opportunity. You all have a good day.
We will put this on the agenda then in two weeks, okay? See that that is done.
Okay.
Okay. Next, Becca Fent Clark, WVU Extension Agent and 4H Youth Development. And I see you have some visitors. If you would bring them forward, and please identify them.
Okay, they're all going to have the opportunity to speak to you.
Great.
Thanks so much for having us. You always hear from Mary and myself, so today I thought it would be great to bring some of our 4H campers so that you can hear about their experience at camp, their experience with 4H. Several of them are involved in the fair this week, so they may chat about that, but I kind of let them decide what they're going to say. So we, who wants to go first?
Always go first.
I'll go first.
Okay, so this is Lindsay Snyder.
Hello, I'm Lindsay. I don't really like having to go back to you guys, I'm sorry. I've been doing 4H for about ten years now. I am very active. I'm in clubs and I go to the camp. And I started last year. I volunteered as a day camp counselor and a younger camp counselor, though which was amazing to help those little kids get interested in 4H and involved. It was fantastic. Through 4H, I learned great skills. I learned to be a leader. I learned teamwork. I learned public speaking skills. Without 4H, I definitely would not be here in front of you today. With learning great public speaking skills, I also ran in the Mon County Pageant yesterday. I got second runner-up. It was my first pageant ever, though which was amazing, and I do thank it all to 4H because I would never have had the skills and be prepared enough to get up in front of people.
And I will disclose your letter to me.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, so next we'll have Arden Minor. So this is my seventh year in the 4H program, and I moved to Morgantown about five years ago, and it really helped a lot to just be able to, like, slot right into the Mon County 4H program because I used to do 4H where I used to live. And just having 4H be here and be so accepting has just helped me so much, especially with moving, because moving was hard. 4H has also helped me with leadership skills, as Lindsay said, because I've used the leadership skills I've learned in 4H for other activities. Like, I am a section leader in the band this year, which I put on my, like, application that I was involved in 4H and had great leadership skills, and that really helped me get the job. So 4H just means a lot to me, and it makes, helped me make so many great friends just all over the state of West Virginia, and it's just been such a great opportunity for me to be able to do it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Elena Evansen.
Hi, my name's Elena Evansen. This was my seventh year in 4H this year, and I've just loved it since I started. I've been doing day camp counseling for a little while now, and I was able to do a, be a younger camp counselor this year, and it just opened my world so much, being able to help the kids and watch them grow up throughout this. Because at younger camp this year, I got to see some of the kids I'd been working with at day camp, and they just loved it so much. And outside of camp, I am active in clubs a lot. I've been leaders in my clubs. It's just helped me so much. I'm at the fair this week, helping with the barn and all that. And I've also been doing a lot of different competitions statewide and stuff through 4H, like livestock judging and all this stuff that's helped me speak and make decisions and just be able to communicate how I feel. And I don't, would not have been able to do this without 4H. I've made so many friends, and it's just changed my life since I started.
Next, we have Ben Minor. He's a little nervous. I'm going to have him tell you about his project for the fair. So he won a best of show, so tell him what you, what you did.
Hello?
Hello, Ben. It's okay, all right? That's why I said, always go first. Yes.
So, um, I did an electronic project this year, and doing this through 4H helped me learn so much. I was able to create a little board with a circuit on it, and that won best of show. I also did the same project as a visual presentation, which used a lot of my public speaking skills, which I definitely learned from 4H.
Thank you.
So I do have a report for you, so that you're familiar with what, what we had going on at camp. I appreciate your visit and hope you enjoyed dinner. We loved having you at camp this summer. We certainly appreciate all that you do for us. We love the facility. Camp Muffley is a beautiful place for us to camp, and with the addition of that extra cabin, we were able to accommodate one hundred and eighty campers at younger camp, and so that was a record for us. And I was nervous, but it went really well. All of our 4H camps this summer went incredibly well. So I will pass out our report, but first, we are going to sing a song, much to the dismay of the people behind me, but that is what we do. So we probably will stand over here.
Okay.
Mary runs to the other side. [laughing] West Virginia, boys and girls are ever in the lead. They train their heads to think correctly, train their hands to serve directly. For their health, they're ever watchful, all advice they heed. And each and every heart among them meets another's need. So here's to West Virginia, boys and girls, and the glorious 4H side. May the gold blue light be ever bright, as the winds blow, this land so fine. Okay. Thank you.
Howl, howl.
And then before we scatter on to do different things, I was hoping that we could get a quick picture with you all, so, and I'll pitch off some things that we have.
We have plenty of room up here now.
Yes. Yeah, come on up.
It's not like it was, okay? You move the chairs.
Thank you.
Want a sash?
Well, I'll, I'll wait to where, I'm certain that Amy has a sash ready for me, okay? There's no question, all right? I'll explain that because it's my birthday, and Amy always prepares a sash for me at the fair, just so people would recognize that, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm about to get you off.
Thank you all so much.
If I could say, that was the first time I'd ever been to the 4H camp. I have to admit, as Becca knows, I'm not from West Virginia. I'm from the city. I'm from Philadelphia, and I never even knew anything about 4H until Ed started to tell me about it, and Becca then kept bending my ear. But I, but I want to tell you something that I learned, that the leadership skills that you all have, I went to State, Boy State, and I happened to say that I was there, and I said, "Howl, howl." And it was like ninety percent of the people responded that they had all been through 4H. So I want you to know that we appreciate what you're doing and just keep it up, and I hope you pass that on to your younger brothers and sisters. It's been a real shock, and I hope that the three of us can continue coming each year and get invited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for your time. I'm awfully proud of them, so thank you.
They deserve it.
Next, we'll move on to correspondence. I think we have the Bow Park Fourth Quarter Levy Spending Financial Report.
We do. They expended a total of eight thousand, eighty-four dollars and thirty-two cents during April to June.
All right. Is there any other correspondence?
There is not.
Okay. Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
No.
Good. We'll proceed then to new business. First up is consideration of setting a public hearing date and time for proposed annexation application by the town of Granville.
Yes. August twenty-third at ten a.m., or as soon as can be heard.
Okay.
I believe we need to make that in a motion, so, yeah. So I'd like to set August twenty-third at ten a.m. for a public hearing for the annexation application by the town of Granville.
Ten a.m., okay.
And then I will speak to it.
I will second that. Discussion?
Yeah, just clarification so the public understands. All this does was, we're following the procedure, so now we have the public hearing, and individuals can speak on it, and the county commission can ask questions. So that's all we're doing at this time, and then from there, then we go on, move on. But I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We have that set. Next, consider approval for myself to sign an engagement letter with Lyley Rain, L.L.P. to provide legal services in conjunction with preparation filing of a market modification petition with the FCC in conjunction with Preston County Commission. This is something we've been discussing for some time regarding, see if we get at least DISH and some other entities involved and change this, so.
It's in today's paper that Preston County did it?
Yes, and I have the letter here, Tom. The Preston County cap is one thousand, so I would assume that we would make the cap the same in your motion, okay?
Sure. So move that we have the president sign with a cap of one thousand dollars.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Consideration to approve the draft Freedom of Information Act request to be filed with West Virginia State Tax Department to obtain a list of businesses within Monaga County that are required to pay wine and liquor tax based on sales with physical addresses and the amount remitted for the past five years. Move for approval with discussion? Second.
Could I ask, Colleen, could you please read the letter? I want it public.
Under the West Virginia Freedom of Information Act, West Virginia Code twenty-nine-b-dash-one-dash-one, the Monagalia County Commission hereby requests a list of businesses that are required to pay wine and liquor tax based on sales. Please include the business name and address that identifies their physical location as well as the total remitted for each quarter for a period of five years. The West Virginia Freedom of Information Act requires a response to this request be made within five business days. If you deny any or all of this request, please cite each specific exemption you feel justifies the refusal to release the information and notify the county of the appeal procedures available to us under the law.
Thank you. We have tried for the last sixteen months with the help of Kelly Palmer and the sheriff, both sheriffs at the time, who have tried to get the information. We have tried diplomacy. We have done everything possible that we could, and I just hold this up and I will hand this out again. This is a chart of the county in wine and liquor revenue, and I circle the one area during the football season of two thousand thirteen, fourteen, where we didn't, I guess we were a dry county. We received zero dollars for two quarters. When we added them up, Sean was adding them up, we realized that, we thought, well, maybe the cities receive the funds. But when you added the funds up, we were short a half a million dollars or more. So we have just asked to try and get clarification, and for whatever reason, they have purposely refused to give us any of this information. And we're taking the next step. I believe the citizens have the right, and this is money that was already sent to the state tax office and was supposed to be remitted back. So I want that very clear. It isn't that any business here didn't give the money. We gave them the money. We're just asking a clarification so we can see what is going on, and we've tried every step, and I appreciate the other commissioners supporting this.
And I did have a consult with a previous commissioner, John Piles. Apparently, this is not a new issue.
Oh, really?
This actually has occurred before, yes. And it was an issue of the zip codes, and it probably still is an issue of the zip codes. But it's been sad to say that the state has been recalcitrant in not giving the information that we've requested. That's really the reason that we have to go forward with this. So it's been properly moved and seconded to go ahead with this letter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
To consider approval of five thousand dollars to be set aside for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day organized by the Morgantown Utility Board. We have done this in the past, so how do you feel? Move for approval? Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right, we're a little bit ahead of schedule right now, so we have to wait till ten-thirty for the public hearing. We'll go ahead then to any reports from elected officials. Yes?
Come on, yeah.
Come on down.
Come on down. The price is right.
Gentlemen, I'm not exactly an elected official, but I just wanted to bring you up to speed on what's been going on with the flooding in the western end of the county. I've been working pretty diligently with Director Jimmy Smith and also with Mike Fortney, the Assistant Director of nine-one-one in regards to the flooding. Yesterday, we sat down with our GIS system, was able to look at the new flooding lines from the fieldwork that we've been doing, and compare them to what's actually happened with the high watermark that actually occurred out in the Wadestown area. I think Wadestown was the most affected area in Monagalia County. Right now, I was, yesterday I was contacted by Region Six Planning to hopefully, there might be some money set aside to help with the recovery. FEMA is supposed to be on-site within the next day or so out there, trying to see what's available, you know, from disaster assistance on their end. So I just wanted to say thank you again for the GIS system because that's been, you know, obviously, very, very detrimental in what we've been able to do in regards to the mapping and trying to see what exactly, how we can benefit our citizens when it comes to the flooding, so.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about what Mike just talked about. Saturday or Sunday evening, I got a text from Commissioner Bloom that Delegate Statler was going to get ahold of us out at Mason Dixon Park. I've got some pictures here. This, this is standing on top of the bank, which is five or six foot down, Dunker Creek. And this is a sign that is five foot high, where we're putting the new road in, going out to the other area out there you can't get to. This is what it looks like Saturday morning of that area right there. And this is the five-foot-high sign that has four and a half foot of water on it, so that water's probably come up ten foot in Dunker Creek. And what's been told to us by the other Mr. Statler that owns a store out there, he's never seen the water this high in fifty-five years. What we did was, and I want to thank the commission also, but also want to recognize Anthony Jambroni and his crew of Andrew Kastner, Trayvon Ward, and Dylan Weber, who went out Monday and assisted the people in Hundred.
Yes.
They're out there today in Wana, of the house that got flooded pretty bad. We took our truck out, and we're going to haul the, all the damaged material from Wana to Hundred, so it's in a place out there where the National Guards can pick it up. But I also have pictures of the guys doing some work out there. They had to remove, like, a countertop and sink and everything to get the carpet out, try to save the floors and everything, but I just wanted to recognize those guys and, you know, very, very good that they was able to do that and good that you were able to let us send them out there, which you didn't know about it, but thank you.
Well, we all work in the county together, okay? You know, a lot of times, I know the complaint is, a lot of times, that the western end is not recognized. I feel that that's not really true. You know, we're, we look out for everybody that we possibly can in the county. So thank you for your efforts, and thank the gentleman who provided this service. Any other comments from elected officials or reports from elected officials? We still have five minutes, so, Tom, I'll let you go ahead with your report.
Yes, yeah, to continue, I was not here, and I first want to thank Joe Statler, who kept all of us involved. I did take a ride out there on Monday and visited Blue Mountain Incorporated, which is the big business out there that we actually use. They employ seventy-five people. They lost the shack that had all their equipment. They use so many electronics, they have no air conditioning, the wiring is basically ruined, the floors are ruined, but they were out there for forty-eight hours, all the employees, cleaned it up, so they were actually working on Monday. But they were hard hit. We went to visit some other areas, but I really want to thank the first responders. Pictures of what they were sending me, they went out, and from what I was told, five cars of the responders went to fire department, and then they, their cars were destroyed. So unfortunately, that, that happened. Also, I was told that the animals that were at the fair, at two in the morning, they, they got the animals out, but they said they were floating, the pigs were floating upside down with the snout up. So that's how high it was that quickly. So it was, it was so unbelievable that, you know, it's hard for us to understand, but I do want to thank and congratulate all the first responders because, you know, we couldn't do it without them. I also want to thank Bobby, Jambi, and those people, and our workers, who immediately, even though, and I wanted to clear, Hundred is not in our county, they're our neighbors, and if we had a problem, we would want them to help us, and they're going out there, and I really think that's what it's all about. So the thing that surprised me the most was how positive the people were even after this tragedy, that they were very, wanted to move on. There was no loss of life, which still, I don't understand how, because it was amazing. So I really want to thank everyone who was involved. The second thing I want to talk about is, I want to thank the deputies and sheriffs, and they left. I've had positive comments about them controlling the traffic before the Easton Hill has been closed. In fact, I think they did such a good job that yesterday, they had some problems in the city, Saberton, and the comment I was getting was, well, why didn't they act like these deputies and sheriffs? So, I mean, but we're all working together. We're down to ten days plus. Please understand, you know, with growth comes a little problems that, you know, we just have to stay away from that area or choose another area. And the final thing that I do want to talk about is, I want to promote, because we're doing something different, the Cheat Lake Regatta. It's the first ever regatta we're going to have in the county. Cheat Lake Rotary is pushing it, but basically, it's, it's an entire family event on August nineteenth. It airs canoe race, kayak race, paddleboard race, but this is a race that I want everyone to be involved with because this is the best. It's a zero-k race. You sign up for it, and it's zero-k. So when you start, you finish, and I think it's just a really neat idea. You'll get a bib, and, you know, you get to eat the food, and, you know, I know some of us have already been preparing at several of the restaurants for the zero-k race. So I just think it's something that's a great idea, and we want to continue this, and just real positive events, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right. That, that sounds like an interesting process.
Yes.
Running nowhere.
But you get a bib.
I get a bib, okay.
You survived it.
I believe we are close enough, it is twenty-nine, that we can go ahead and, I believe, open this public hearing. This is regarding the University Town Center Tax Increment Finance District to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed filing of an application by county commission with the West Virginia Development Office, which application would seek to reduce the existing boundaries of the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District. Is there anybody that wishes to speak regarding this public hearing? Hearing none, we will close this public hearing, and pursuant to that is to consider the adoption of a resolution by the county commission, which would authorize the filing of the application by the county commission with the existing boundaries of the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District. I won't read the resolution.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Move for adoption of the resolution that was just stated.
I second it. It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. This passes, okay? Do you want to go into executive?
I just want to see if there's anything else before we go into.
Well, I've got my report, but we, I can give that when we come back.
No, why don't you do your report now?
I can do that now. I can do that now.
Yeah, why don't you do your report now?
All right. I would like to thank all those who reached out to us regarding the flooding. In other words, I had numerous calls from about the state regarding, you know, and as well as our senators and, you know, our local legislators, particularly Joe. I referred all the assessment to Jimmy Smith of 911. In other words, because apparently there are some grants that can be used on some things. Stream mitigation, I believe, was one, and the other was the fact that we had a fairground, and that allowed that to be put into a grant application, I think by Region 6. So they're developing that. This is the week of Mon County Fair. It's ongoing right now. This is a project that I chaired for a number of years. I do not anymore since I became commissioner, but I would really like to invite people to come out for a good time. This is family fun, and please, you know, if you can give your support, we can continue in this endeavor. On Saturday will be the third annual sale. This is of the animals. I'd like to report also that last, when we first started, there were about 20 to 25 animals that were in the barn, and I think we borrowed most of those. Last year, there were 102 animals in the barn. This year, there is 182 animals in the barn. So we have grown to a point to where actually the barn is full. There are some proposals from Myland Park for expansion, which will be, you know, hopefully that this will be something that we'll look to in next year. So that's, you know, that's what's going on there. So come out if you really want to buy, just help a kid. You don't have to take the animal home. You don't, you can send the animal back with the kid if you like. A lot of times, that's what I do. I buy bunnies and I send them back with the kid. So come on out. We have bunnies, we have chickens, we have lambs, we have goats, we have calves, we have cows, all right? Lastly, I personally spoke to Eldon Callan about the senior Mons budget issue as he's their vice chair. This commission does not believe in third-party resolution in the media, and so we have asked Eldon to a work session where we will assess, discuss, and review the current and past senior Mons budget, as Eldon, of course, is most familiar with our budgeting process. We will meet and resolve these issues in question in three weeks, as I shall be out for two weeks in the following meetings. So I would like to have this set for a work session on the third Wednesday from now, if you could do that for me, Colleen.
I can.
Okay, and make sure that Mr. Callan is invited. I'd also like to request that we have the financials for the past five years on the senior Mons, so that we could review it in advance and be familiar with their process.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. All right.
Ready?
Yes.
Move to go in executive session pursuant to West Virginia Code 6-9A-4-B-9.
Okay, I'll second that. Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we shall go into executive session.
Yeah, break in case we need.
Yes. Take five minutes as a break.
Move to come out of executive session?
Second, it's been properly moved and seconded to come out of executive session.